So, let me call the July 20th Business Meeting of Narberth Borough Council to order. Mr. Camilleri, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the republic which makes us, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, will you call the roll?
Sure, President Bush?
Here.
Vice President Panopoulos?
Here.
Member Birra?
Here.
Member Foreman?
Here.
Member Mrazey?
Here.
Member Argritz? Absent. Member Wilson?
Here.
Mayor Deitch?
Here.
All right. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
Yes, Mr. President, for the full session, we should be able to remove 15B. We'll have a brief update on that later for the item.
All right, I will just not make that part of the executive session. Do we need to actually adjust the agenda? Do we need to vote on that?
I don't believe so, for an executive session item.
Okay, great. I have no comments, except to welcome our new Borough Manager. And I think we'll have a little more when the agenda item to approve the contract comes up. Madam Mayor, do you have any comments?
Sure. First of all, again, I'd like to welcome our new Borough Manager. Happy to have you. We had a very successful cone with a cup with our officers last Saturday. Officers from Lower Merion joined us, along with Chief String, Officer Farnaccio, Officer Lynn. It was a very successful event. I'd like to thank Chief String for setting it up. We will have more opportunities to meet our officers this summer. And as the time goes by, we're going to set up more of these opportunities to interact and get to know the officers in our community. Second thing is it's summer, it's vacation time, a lot of people are going away. I just want to remind folks that you can always call the Northern Police Officers, leave a message for Chief String. We can send an officer to keep an extra eye on the house and to do drive-bys. And just, you know, give a little attention to your house if that makes you feel better about being away from the borough. So please just feel free to do that, and that's our pleasure to help you out with that. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. Next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'm going to ask the Council Vice President to manage that, since I'm not in the room. So, Michelle?
Okay. Welcome, everyone. Let's start with folks in the room, and then we'll move to Zoom after that. So starting with the back right corner, back right row. If you have a public comment, you could stand up and speak as loud as you can, so folks can hear you on the Zoom and state your main address and your public comment.
That's okay. Three minutes?
Yes, the public comments are limited to three minutes. Time to make a fair, everyone.
John Constantine, 400 Narberth Avenue. I wanted to get some information from you guys on the nature and purpose of the committee that's being set up for the Master Park Plan. You can provide the purpose and what you're going to get out of this. And then also regarding Sabine Park, you know, what are the plans for that? Are you still proceeding with this RFP process to get that developed? Because it shouldn't be developed. We're short space for parks relative to our population of this town. So we need every acre that is available for parks. And then another thing, your updating ordinance is to make it mandatory for residential units to be 550 square feet or less. I mean, you purposely want to densify the town with more people? Is that why you're... I mean, I hope you can answer that at a relative time to tell me why you're making it mandatory that 10% smaller units in these master developments. And then, third topic, you can update me on what the policy is for using tasers in this town? Is that going to be different than Lower Merion? You know, they're not... I know several people have been trained recently, it looks like maybe $25 a course or something like that. But if they're not used appropriately, they can hurt people. There. And I'd like to know how many cases of taser usage have been used in this town over the last five years?
I'm going to ask the council not to respond to that question. They're as active or threatening litigation related to the Constantine family, related to taser usage in the borough. So I would pray that I put in contact with an attorney for redundant mandate, this Mr. Constantine, related to his taser where prosecution were against the borough.
Okay. Well, public comment, as we all know, is time for a public comment. We don't typically do a question and answer anyway, so I don't know if you want to know.
I will wait for the follow-ups.
Yeah, and a number of the things that you brought up are on our agenda. So I think when we get to the parks on the community, we can certainly talk a little bit more, maybe about the function of the committee. And remember, Green Building, I imagine we'll have the summary of that, that will help address some of the work you brought up in comment. Thank you. Moving to the second row, we will start on the right again. Yes.
Annie Brecht of Byfaris. My husband was here, Pinbar McCarthy, was here last time, talking about a parking situation. And we are seeing a number of cars that are basically using our end block near the Elm for storage. There's one that's been parked there for over a week now. And I know that these were issued in error, totally, you know, it wasn't any, you know, let's change the rules or anything. But I am hoping that those that were issued in error could be rescinded. Because we are seeing people parking there for very long periods of time. And all they want is a chance to be able to park somewhere near our house on a regular basis. That's all we're asking. And Rob came with me, he's my neighbor. Oh, I didn't speak to him.
Hi, I'm Rob Anderson, 203 Forest Avenue. Yeah, just to kind of reiterate what Ann said, I think since the Elm opened, the parking situation on the 200 block of Forest has gotten a lot more difficult. And I've personally seen people park and go into the Elm. And I thought that, you know, part of the plan with the Elm was to not have them have parking permits on the 200 block of Forest. So I just wanted to see, you know, I would just like to see if there's something that can be done to alleviate the parking situation on that block.
Is this matter going to be discussed later? I do not think that's on the agenda. I just, we're just kind of here for an update, if anything.
I mean, Mayor, if you have work to discuss it after the meeting.
I'd be happy to discuss it with you guys separately from this meeting. And see what's going on and see if we can find this solution. So I'd be happy to, outside the meeting, we can talk.
Thank you. I can't stay for a minute. I might see you.
Yeah, come by and see me, call me, you have my number. And let's see if we can get things down. Okay?
Rob has two little kids, so.
It will not likely be after this meeting, because this is going to go pretty late.
All right, we're going to have a public comment to the front row, the gentleman on the right. Okay.
I wanted to congratulate the Borough on...
And your name, just, you know.
Number 25, Narberth Park.
Thank you, Peter.
I wanted to congratulate the Borough on entering into this acquisition of Lot 3 Elmwood. And I had a question. When I see legal matter concerning Lot 3 Elmwood tonight, the deal is in the bag, right? Is the legal thing about making a 501(c)(3) for a fundraising for green spaces? What is the legal thing tonight?
You mean in the executive session?
I'm very deaf. What is it?
Do you mean in the executive session, part of what that's listed here?
I haven't seen that.
Okay, because that says 198 Elmwood.
And the other thing I wanted to say, I mean, I need to speak up on that. It's locked in, it's done. So there is no legal issue with...
We lost the room.
No worries in that. They've already started clearing some of the bases.
My wife and I walked over there the other night and walked right down into that lovely green space. It's wonderful. And I wanted to say, I'm not making myself look good, but I told Samantha Bryant and Cindy Ricketts sometime back that if that was successful, I would make a pretty decent donation. And I'm urging the Borough to look at that and say, and look into, won't there be a lot of people in Narberth who would say, yeah, I'll cover up a few thousand, or I'll cover up a few hundred to help reimburse the Borough for the money they're putting in to buy that park? And I bet there's a lot of people who would put money in and feel good about it.
Peter, if you have time to stay for the meeting, that is something that's on our agenda. That if you have time to stay for the meeting, we are going to be talking about that initiative tonight. It's item 10B on our agenda. 10B, so it's near the end.
What again?
It's item 10B, so it's near the end.
And may I just say that I think it's a steal to get a park, almost two acres, for that amount of money? I know there's going to be a cost keeping it up. But to get a new park in Narberth, almost two acres, for the price of a rowhouse, that's pretty good.
Yes, yes. Okay. We're going on the public comment?
Yeah, yes. My name's Sue Swift, 346 Meeting House Lane. I know I've spoke with Mr. Camilleri.
Camilleri, yes.
Camilleri? And Kevin Walsh. We are living next to an Airbnb. And it is a very well-designed, well-planned-out Airbnb. Our home has been advertised, I live in the old Toll House, he advertises our home as a tourist attraction. He also has a full-size Cinderella carriage in his backyard, which he also advertises for pictures for his guests. If we have any concerns or complaints about the property, we have a 718 number, which is a New York City Borough number to call the manager of the property. He was planning this from day one, it was very clear. And I guess what, you know, it's really been really, really, really frustrating. But I guess our biggest question is, why? It's illegal, right? I assume it is illegal. So why can you keep doing it if it's illegal?
I can say that enforcement action has begun. I spoke to Mr. Walsh throughout this earlier this week, and he has initiated the enforcement process. So we are taking action on that. I can confirm.
Yeah, I understand. But it's been about a month.
There's a requirement under, it's a zoning violation, they're using the property illegally. That's what the Borough recognizes, and that's what he's been cited for. The Usability Planning Code, which covers zoning in Pennsylvania, requires there to be an ability to appeal that violation to the zoning hearing board, and that there be a period of time for that appeal. So we have sent out the notices, and now we're waiting that time for the appeal. Certainly, I would think the Borough would take the position that if we're...
You can talk a little louder, I'm deaf.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I believe the Borough would likely take the position that if the Borough is successful with its enforcement actions, we would be pursuing daily violations for every day that they remain in violation at that time. But at this point, we do legally have to provide him with that right to appeal the zoning officer's, Mr. Walsh's, violation letter, the notice of violation that was sent.
I mean, can't he just keep appealing and appealing and appealing?
Technically, yes, he could do that, and the Borough could also take additional actions if it came to that.
I mean, this guy is a businessman, and he's been planning this for quite some time. It was from the start he was planning this. And Kevin Walsh had suspicion and spoke to him. He knows it's not legal. He did it anyway. And he's invested a lot of money. He intentionally made it to be an attraction for Airbnb people, for people, you know, looking for Airbnbs on Main Line or Philadelphia. He advertises that there can be up to 25 people can sleep in there. Today, there was a fire. Well, one day, one of the visitors set off a firecracker in the middle of the street, a big one, a very big firework in the middle of the street. We told them that they can't do that, and they stopped. Today, there was a fire alarm going off in the house, or smoke detector going off already now.
I'm sorry. I don't want to cut you off. We have a lot on our agenda. And public comment is technically limited to three minutes. And we all hear this is a serious problem. And, you know, the Borough started enforcement, and the enforcement process takes, has to go through the steps that it goes through. We've faced this problem before, and we've been able to stop this activity. So I expect we'll be successful again. Is there anything you want to add?
I hope, well, again, it's really concerning, that we just watched them coming and coming, and this could be a long time, it sounds like. He's a smart businessman. He knows exactly what he's doing. I'm concerned. If there was a fire in there, how would we know how many people were in there?
It sleeps 25, according to his website. Who has the Zoom room? Is it you, Alan, or is it...
Does anyone on Zoom have a comment?
I'm sorry, the zone went out, right?
Sorry, you asked me earlier.
Yes, it's fine, it's fine. We're still going to have a comment.
I was like, at least I live on 200 South Narberth Avenue. About a month or so ago, I went into a crash at one of the intersections. And a lot of the streets there don't have a stop sign, where like one of the intersection, one side of the street does, but the side doesn't. And I was wondering if this was perceived as an issue, a safety issue before, if there's anything being done to improve the traffic safety of those intersections? Because I did see this crash, and then my girlfriend, most of us, in Narberth, had a little convulsion. One person claimed she didn't see her as she was going through the intersection. So I was wondering if there's anything being done about that. And a second thing... Could you say the exact intersection? It was Narberth Avenue and I think it's Chestnut, I think it was. I can look at the map real quick. You're at 200, you said? I'm at 200, yeah. Yeah, it was at Narberth and Chestnut Avenue. There was a crash there. And it's because the person didn't realize it wasn't always intersection, I'm not sure what it was, but...
We can definitely follow up with you. And if you want to get ahold of us tomorrow, or sometime next week, we certainly can talk to you about it. And as far as there's a sign saying, we can sort that out, too.
Okay. And then the second thing, it's not really related. I enjoy booking around Narberth, and I like visiting businesses by biking. A business in Narberth along Montgomery Avenue, I don't really have a word, I couldn't bike racks anywhere. I was wondering if there was any plans to add bike racks along Montgomery Avenue, so it's easier for me to bike there and visit businesses there. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody in Zoom?
Is anyone there? Let's see, somebody has a hand up.
My name is Carol Murray Scanlon from Sabine Avenue. I'd like to ask, what talks have been done or going on with the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority? Have any developers been approached or approached the Borough about the 201 Sabine property? Just like to get a confirmation or an assurance that nothing is going on at the present time.
There is no...
All right. And then, what property is being disposed of from 201 Sabine?
You know, it's public comment. Remember, we're trying to stay away from the question and answer, but I definitely didn't hear you, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear you either.
15A.
Oh, 15A, okay.
It's disposition, not disposal. It's just status. It's just related to a real estate matter. That's the term that's used under the Sunshine Act for the executive sessions. Disposition of property, whether it be leasing or a sale of property, or a discussion of potential uses of that property for sale or lease. Again, I think council has made it clear that there's never been any discussions of any sales here. And oftentimes, we do discuss leases for 201 Sabine Avenue, because, as you know, it's been used for commercial purposes for a good 20 years for leasing to other private parties.
So with this, with the discussion for the disposition of the property, it does not mean the disposition of the property or working with a developer for use of the property?
As Vice President Panopoulos stated, there has been no discussion, any developers, related to this property. Last time we had a comment, so there's certainly no match issue.
All right. And I also would like to say, Council, where we still have a problem with wrong-way traffic on Sabine, because we need more one-way signs, mid-block alerting traffic, once they get up to the crest of the street, that they're on the wrong way. It's an ongoing problem, and we have almost our whole entire block asked for one-way signs. We had some police observations there. Of course, they don't happen when the police are there. But it's an everyday occurrence when there's wrong-way traffic going on. And the biggest concern is that by the time the traffic gets to the crest of the street, their traffic is going at a pretty good clip, and then they're at the park. And it's a dangerous situation, and the easy thing would be to do is just put two more one-way signs that show in the middle of the block, oh, by the way, people, you missed the first one-way sign, you're going the wrong way.
Okay, thank you, Cameron.
Okay.
Anybody else on Zoom for public comment? Okay, seeing no one, I will hand it back to President Bush to continue through the rest of the air car agenda.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Panopoulos. So our next agenda item is eight, the consent agenda.
I move that our council approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second?
Is there any discussion of the consent agenda? All right, we're voting on the consent agenda items A, B, and C. All those in favor? Any opposed? If you're going to vote against them, just say no, because I can't see it. So, all right. The consent agenda has passed. Our next item is 9A, which is the employment agreement for Borough Manager.
I move that our council approve the employment agreement with Borough Manager Kenneth Camilleri. Did I say that right?
Camilleri.
Camilleri, all right.
It's closed.
Thanks. Somebody needs a second.
Sorry, my audio cut out. I'm assuming there was a second. All right. So just to lay this out, this is the employment contract is based on the employment contracts for our prior Borough Manager, so the terms are very similar. Is there any discussion of the contract at this time? All right, then, let's have a vote to approve the employment agreement with Borough Manager Kenneth Camilleri. All those in favor? Opposed? All right, congratulations. Mr. Camilleri, do you want to say anything at this time?
Well, I'm really excited to be a part of this Borough, both as your new manager and as a new community member. I'm looking forward to being here to serve and be available to our residents and businesses and our guests. And I'm just really excited about the opportunity to help Narberth be the best it can be. Thank you, everybody.
If I may just add, there'll be a meet and greet with our new Borough Manager next Thursday, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the gazebo. And there'll be light refreshments. Everybody's invited to come and introduce yourself to our new Borough Manager.
Thank you. I appreciate you reminding me about that. I almost forgot.
All right, let's move on to 9B, which is the public hearing. So, Mr. Walco?
Thank you, President Bush. I will adjourn to this public hearing on this amendment to our zoning code and subdivision and land development code. And I will go through the title of that ordinance briefly to highlight the aspects and the changes of this ordinance. But I have five exhibits for this hearing. First, Order Exhibit 1 is the ordinance itself. Order Exhibit 2 is the proof of publication of tonight's hearing on this ordinance, which was published in the Main Line Times on July 2nd and July 9th, 2023. Order Exhibit 3 is the proof of submission of this proposed ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library, which was submitted on June 26th, 2023. Order Exhibit 4 is proof of submission to the Montgomery County Planning Commission on June 20th, 2023. Order Exhibit 5 is proof of submission to the Narberth Planning Commission on June 16th, 2023. Both commissions having done reviews of this ordinance. So this is a comprehensive zoning change, so it highlights many different aspects of our zoning code. We went through this ordinance in depth at our June business meeting to finalize it. And it was amended and advertised and circulated as council so desired at that time. The highlights of this ordinance are that it would permit apartment buildings with a maximum height of four stories in the 5B zoning district by conditional use. Would permit mixed-use buildings with a maximum height of 36 feet and three stories in the 5A zoning district by conditional use. And apartment buildings in the 5A zoning district. It would also establish a conditional use criteria for those uses, for both the apartment buildings and the mixed-use buildings in their zoning districts. And would establish green building bonus criteria and requirements for accessory dwelling units that would be required to implement these green building bonus criteria, both which would be approved for the ADUs and for building projects through conditional use. It also makes changes related to parking credits in the 5B zoning district and provides for bicycle parking spaces and standards that was necessary to fill in and to complement our subdivision land development ordinance. And it amends our subdivision land development ordinance to provide for building facade vertical section standards for certain buildings, existing buildings that are wider than 65 feet. And it provides those bicycle parking space requirements, or new requirements for bicycle parking. It also makes a change to our streets and sidewalks ordinance to prohibit vegetation planted along the sidewalk protruding into, I'm sorry, to exceed four feet in height. So if it's a long sidewalk, it can't be more than four feet in height. Because that was previously in the zoning code, so it was removed to that sidewalk code. So those are the changes. It was reviewed by the Planning Commission. There were some changes and some recommendations to be made. For council on the agenda later tonight, under subsection E is the advertisement of zoning ordinance amendment related to comprehensive zoning changes, which incorporate most of those recommendations for this ordinance, or at least provide it for council for perfect discussion, to see where council would like to go with this. The, I think the highlight, the unique aspect of this ordinance deals with the green building bonus standards. And should be noted that all of these requirements for green building bonus standards for construction projects are not requirements. These are only when you're attempting to get a bonus related to the height, or an extra floor essentially at that point in time in these limited zoning districts. So it is not a requirement. So it is not a requirement. It also, I note that the, there was a comment about requiring the smaller 550 square foot or unit apartments. And again, that is not a requirement for all construction projects, but that's only when you're seeking three stories in the 5A district, and you do that by conditional use. And if you're approved, you then have to have the 550 square feet or smaller. If you're not looking for the additional height, you don't need to apply and try to attempt that, those smaller units. And there are a number of definitions that have also been added to the zoning code to reflect the definitions and to, I believe in most, all extents are in line with the definitions in our subdivision and land development ordinance that was enacted earlier this year. So a lot of this ordinance attempts to bring our zoning code in line with the previously enacted changes of our subdivision and land development ordinance. If there's any questions from council at this time, before I turn it over to the public for questions. If you haven't seen none, I'll turn it over to the public to see if the public has any questions or comments related to this ordinance itself.
I have a question. On Meeting House Lane 5A, because there's a lot of building going on, you know, near Montgomery.
Yeah, I believe that the very end, 5A, it wouldn't be 5A.
5B.
The very end where it meets Montgomery Avenue would be 5B. So this would apply to the very end along Montgomery Avenue portion.
Just to only Montgomery Avenue?
Right.
If the building's on Montgomery and the back is on Meeting House, it's...
There are buildings, so where Meeting House meets Montgomery, that would be in the 5B district.
5B.
5B district. So this ordinance would allow the apartment buildings at four stories, but not, but once you get further down Meeting House, you're then not in the 5B.
Well, but the address is Montgomery. The address is Montgomery. The address.
It really depends on where the building's from.
There's, there's a map that you can find on our site that shows where the, so it's, it's a lot easier to see it than I could describe. Yeah, I was trying to find it. Okay.
And I do note that Mr. Pressley from Planning Commission is here. I don't always like to put him on the spot, but if he has any comments or anything you'd like to add related to this ordinance or the Planning Commission's review of this ordinance. But I'm sorry, before you finish, Pressley, did you have any other questions?
I guess my question is, so, I don't know, maybe you'll have a better answer. Maybe Mr. Pressley have a better answer, because you know, I can tell.
Yes. May I? So you're, the, personally, you're concerned about 714 Montgomery.
Right.
The frontage on Montgomery and the frontage on the main town, the frontage on the main town, a little gas station on the corner. So everyone knows that property, right? And that is all, the entirety of that property is in the 5B district. So the provisions that council's discussing tonight would apply to that whole property.
Right, so there can be higher, they can have a higher building in a residential area, because yeah, this is on Montgomery.
Well, this is gonna sound like it's technical, and I don't mean it to be basic. Currently, 45-foot buildings are allowed on that property, anywhere on that property, but they have to be commercial buildings. So what this change is allowing is for those to be residential buildings, not just commercial buildings. Or mixed, or mixed-use buildings, yeah. They have to have a commercial component in that.
Which is the plan now?
No, the plan now, the proposal that has been made, I wouldn't call it a plan, because it's really a formal proposal. It's for, it's for apartment buildings, just a residential building. Currently, Mr. Walker's right, the zoning would require there to be some commercial use in that building. And the Planning Commission's feeling that that wasn't necessarily the right solution, that a residential building would be better than a commercial use in that area. The 45-foot rule would not change. You can, you can always, you can build a 45-foot building there now. The other difference is, in addition to not being able to build a building that is only residential and not having a commercial component, you can build a four-story building within that 45 feet, as opposed to just three stories within. So we measure height by feet, like 45 feet. We also measure height by stories, three stories, four stories. The reason for that is because these rules were originally written, and the idea was, these would be commercial buildings. Commercial buildings have higher ceilings than residential buildings. They often have 15-foot ceilings. So we, the original rule was 45 feet, three stories. Residential buildings can have ceilings of 10 feet, 11 feet. And so if you have a 45-foot building, you can fit four stories in there. And so that's why that was changed, because for residential buildings, you can have that four-story without raising the actual feet. What parent do you think is your problem?
What's that? Yeah, I definitely, it's bottom-wise, Meeting House is turning into a motel strip. It really is. It's really bad. They're building, not only do we have an Airbnb on our little block, we also have two huge apartment buildings going up. It's really disappointing. Any other?
Welcome to the members' comment. I'm a member of Norbert. I live on the third floor of an apartment building. I think the changes proposed are positive, I think, indeed. And I'll, you know, I'll make space for people like me who can't afford it on the edge.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
They need to do tax in per acre. Per capita.
Mr. Camilleri is very interested in taxing. It's just we, much money if you can't bring into the borough.
Come on, I'm not opposed to bringing in revenue, or something like that.
But a little bit, it certainly, I could represent this borough, it's certainly going to be inspecting all of the units and making sure that each unit would be a tax-protected.
And the plans are still not, the plans haven't been presented yet, is that correct, for the Haversaw?
There's no formal application, so there's no plans. Anything that he's presented to us, the commission has posted on the website. So basically, what we've seen is publicly available.
All right.
We've seen nothing work than what has been published on the website.
And we, and can the, can the members of the committee comment on it, is that...
So what's gonna happen? I mean, obviously, you come in tonight on the zoning changes. What's gonna happen next is the owner of the property will make a new application and bring a new proposal in and start that whole process that we're giving you. That is a process that allows for public comment, probably five times at least, several planning commission meetings, they'll have their public hearing like the one tonight. And so, and, you know, I've said to you before, if you give me your email address, I'll make sure you know when those meetings are. I don't know how to contact you. I, there's one person I know of is interested in this, and I contact them when there's a meeting coming up. But if you would like a heads up when these meetings are coming, I'll let you know.
I have a question. So for these ordinances, there are, these changes in ordinances, for example, in 5B, how exactly or how much is taken consideration in terms of the tax congestion that an increase in population density would cause? I'm presuming there has been a huge volume of 5B area locations that would be very difficult to understand the ramifications and the differences that would make in terms of certain areas that are already pretty densely populated and without infrastructure that can support that in terms of parking and in terms of the way that cars are pulling over to the side just to let each other go by as is? I'm just wondering how much of that is taken consideration to make these changes? Not sure, I'm addressing it.
It's pressing ahead to keep tracking to you, is that something that the Planning Commission took into consideration when looking at the uses that would be permitted as a result of this change in the ordinance? Particularly the changes between a multi, multi-use commercial and residential should be permitted as opposed to purely residential?
Yes, we, we do, we do consider those things. In this case, traffic generation counts for commercial buildings tend to be higher than traffic generation counts for apartment buildings, particularly at peak hours. Apartment building generation is lower, it's also spread out by the day. So you tend to have less peak traffic than you would from a, from a conference building. So it's, of course, these have changed the last two years. We don't have any data about that, but, but we, you know, we do think about that. And that's one of the reasons why we thought apartment buildings would be appropriate here, because commercial buildings and uses have more impact on adjacent residential neighborhoods. So that, in making that consideration of that differently, we do consider that. When, if and when we ever receive a proposal to develop, we then consider the traffic impacts on the more, like, site-based. I will say though, if I may, that the notion that cars have to stop and let others pass is a good thing for the Planning Commission's plan to do, because it slows people down. And slowing down traffic is, in general, a policy that the Planning Commission is supportive of. You don't think, the purpose of streets is to let cars go as fast as they can and get there as quickly as possible. We've heard, you know, concerns about kids playing in streets and traffic, and so anything that slows cars down is good. That's generally the policy we would like to pursue.
I mean, sorry, if I can just add something very quickly. I mean, most, most of the 5B district is on Montgomery Avenue. It's just directly adjacent to Montgomery. I mean, there's, there's a few properties that do join other streets, but when we're thinking about changes for 5B, you know, most of these changes, when we're thinking about it, we're thinking about Montgomery Avenue. So we do know that there are residential streets, and we do take those into account, but we also have to make rules that make sense for Montgomery Avenue, because that's where most of these properties are. So, you know, that's some of the tension we have when we're making these changes. But, you know, think about other, other four, you know, other four-story apartments on Montgomery Avenue are not, you know, are very in keeping, I think, with the, with the character there. So.
What's your name, sir?
Rafael.
My last name?
Montcore.
He's called?
M A H P O R.
You're the boss of the, where, what do you have?
I'm at 342 Meeting House.
342, okay. I'd just like to be dragged over there?
What was that?
I'd just like to be dragged over there in a minute.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
And if they were to do any kind of road traffic assessment, it will definitely be skewed because the bridge is closed. Like, the traffic on Meeting House has decreased pretty significantly since the bridge has been closed. So, and once that opens up, which of course we need it to open up, it's gonna, it's gonna really impact our street. And it's gonna be an opening, it's gonna impact our street.
If the plan does move forward, they would have to do a traffic impact study. And I think, but I think the Planning Commission is aware of the bridge being closed.
But it would be skewed, I mean, you know.
Any other questions related to, or comments related to the ordinance?
I mean, the ordinance is already, it's not, there's something that can be done about it, right? It's already placed.
No, that's what we're here for. This is a hearing on the ordinance for council's consideration, for council to later determine whether or not they're going to vote to approve this ordinance. And we're obtaining feedback and comment related to the ordinance to assist council with their consideration. Pressley, so you got any handle?
I have a brief comment and one question. A brief comment is to thank borough staff for the work that they have turned these around. It's been quite a sprint to get these done, and it's complicated. And you, particularly Mr. Walker, thank you for your work. It's, it's very, it must be part of your eyes. The question is just something about what you said in introducing the ordinance, where you referred to accessory dwelling units and green, green zoning, green bonus. I, I don't know if I heard you correctly, but I thought I heard the same as that, accessory dwelling units using the green building, they're conditional use. That wouldn't be the case. They would, they would have to use the green building requirements, but they would not go through a conditional use process. And that would just be reviewed outside of that.
And I'm just, I mean, the conditional uses for the green building related to construction projects.
I just wanted to be clear about that. Because that is important. We did discuss specifically with council about not wanting to make this.
Yes, no, there's, green buildings come into the two aspects, the ADU, or accessory dwelling units, and building projects when there's that additional bonus SOC. And if, I think if combined, and when reading the titles, and that was referring to the building projects and not the accessory dwelling. So you're correct.
That's all, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? And with that, we'll close this public hearing, and we'll adjourn back to the public meeting, where this ordinance now is positioned to be voted upon by council. Now I'll turn that back to you, President Bush, to proceed with the agenda.
All right, let's move on to nine C, which is the green building ordinance.
Okay, yeah, I moved the council adopt the green building zoning ordinance amendments in the 5A, 5B zoning districts.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion. All right, let me start by just saying this has been a long process to work these green building concepts into something effective, something practical, something that we can implement. And, you know, I think that, you know, the approach that we've taken by linking them to a bonus, by, by linking sort of slightly, uh, slightly more than was permitted under our prior code is, you know, a very useful one. I think it's one other municipalities throughout Pennsylvania have used when they're considering green bonuses, or when they're considering, you know, any kind of incentive. So this is the, the structure that has been successfully used throughout Pennsylvania. And, you know, this has gone back and forth with the Planning Commission and through borough staff and, you know, through council many times. And I, you know, I'm very glad that we're, we're finally at a point where we can, you know, have a vote on it. I'll leave it up to other council members if you want to jump in here.
Yeah, so, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is where the issue of the restaurants needing, not wrong. Okay, good, move on.
Yeah, so just the way that we're gonna do this is similar to the way that we did the Historic District Act. So we are, you know, we have this legislation, we are going, you know, we're gonna have a vote on it. There are gonna be a couple more additions that have been suggested to the, to this legislation that we are gonna pass separately a little later on as part of another zoning package. So we have some more zoning amendments that are coming up, and the, the part that you're referring to, IR, will be coming up at that point. Just a bit of cleanup, again, similar to what we did with the Historic District Act. We passed some cleanup sort of soon after. It just, our meeting schedule, since we're only meeting once a month, you know, it makes sense to potentially pass this now and then, you know, pass the changes in a couple months, which will be our next opportunity to, to have a vote on zoning, a final vote on a zoning topic. All right, so as I said, this is something that we've, you know, we've, we've had before us many times in various forms, so I think we're all very familiar with this legislation. Are we prepared to vote? Anyone wish to say anything more here? Okay, seeing nothing from council. I'd like to take a vote on the, adopting the green building zoning ordinance amendments in the 5A and 5B zoning districts. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. Thank you, council members. Let's talk about nine D, dispersion of uses. Let's talk about 9D, dispersion of uses.
I move that the council advertise the zoning ordinance amendment to provide for dispersion of certain uses in the 5A and 5B zoning districts.
Let's get a, I'm gonna summarize, Cindy's not here, so I don't know who, Mr. Walker?
Yes, President Bush. So the municipality's planning code allows municipalities the ability to create requirements that certain uses are not within close proximity with each other, sort of dispersing the intensity of uses to ensure that there is a diversity of businesses and to promote a complementary mix of uses that would generate pedestrian foot traffic and overall promote the economic health of the borough. This is an ordinance that would propose to do that for certain uses that front, that have an entranceway fronting Haverford Avenue and North Norbert Avenue in the 5A district. And specifically, the uses that are proposed are what's defined in our code as personal care uses, which there are some, there are slight amendments to the definition of what a personal care use is, but essentially it's a barber shop, beauty shop, hair salon, waxing and hair removal service, nail salon, laundromat and other establishment, similar establishments. So the first part of this ordinance would say that you would not be able to open up one of those uses I just mentioned. And also, that would also apply to a dry cleaner if you were trying to open up that use on Haverford Avenue or North Norbert Avenue in the 5A zoning district, not one of the surrounding districts that it extends within. And there is another identical personal care use, I believe, within 400, 350 feet of that use within the 5A district and a, a use that was already approved, sorry, that was approved after this ordinance would become effective. So essentially, this has no impact on existing personal care uses. So again, let me repeat that. This has no impact on existing personal care uses whatsoever, no matter where you are, anywhere in the borough. This also wouldn't impact the ability for a personal care use to be in close proximity of that existing use. However, when another new personal care service of the same type is trying to open up another shop, so at that point you might have three, you know, beauty salons on Haverford Avenue, this would say, no, you have to have a 350-foot distance from the doorway to, to disperse the uses throughout. Again, the idea is, it's not good for the economic health if you only have two or three types of the same businesses in the downtown lawful zoning district. So that's the first part of what the uses that are being dispersed. The second part deal with what the, the borough created a title called a regulated use, which was regulated to the 5B zoning district. And those were uses, I'll list them, bail bond agencies, check cashing businesses, gun shops, hookah bars, pawn shops, payday lenders, shooting ranges, smoke shops, tobacco, tattoo parlors, stores that sell or offer Delta H T A C or credit home, and any businesses that permit or sanction off-track betting or gambling or horse racing outside of a racetrack. So regulated uses are not allowed in the 5A district currently. And also adult uses are not allowed in the 5A district currently. And the, the Pennsylvania law requires us to provide for those uses and we can't ban them completely from the borough. So the adult uses that are also regulated to the 5B are sort of adult bookstores, sort of adult entertainment type stores. However, the borough certainly doesn't want it to, to have, and it's something that does happen in the area, you know, three smoke shops right next to each other and it turns into sort of a red light district. So this ordinance would also disperse or keep the regulated uses from the regulated use of the same kind. So again, you technically could have a smoke shop, the borough, if council wants it this way, because again, that's what we're here today to see if you want to finalize it. You could have a smoke shop next to a tattoo parlor, but you couldn't have two tattoo parlors right next to each other. There is also a requirement that those, yeah, so that's, that's what, how it regulates the, the regulated uses, the, they need to be 1,000 feet from the building footprint. So not the entryway, the building footprint, they have to be 1,000 feet, so not 350, like there is the 5A, 1,000 feet from one another. Adult uses, again, which are currently regulated, are currently required to be, this remains 500 feet from schools, places of worship, public parks, childcare centers, childcare facilities, nursery schools. That's currently in the code. Now, we've added requirements that they also be 1,000 feet from one another. That wasn't there before, so now adult uses have to be separated. And that's for any adult use. So you couldn't have an adult theater, if you're still around, next to, you know, an adult bookstore. You could not do that because they're both classified as adult uses. And that would be approved by special exception, by something hearing board, they'd have to approve those distance requirements from both those 500-feet property lines of those certain uses then from, from each other. So that is what this ordinance does. We did receive informal reviews from the planning commission, it still has to be formally reviewed by the planning commission. And there were some slight changes from when this was previously circulated, I circulated it up from version today, and essentially that made 350, I think it was 400 previously proposed, now it's 350, and it regulated specifically to Haverford Avenue and North Norbert Avenue and not all the 5A zoning district. So that's a new change. We also provide a language to clarify that those uses in the 5B zoning district are from uses that are approved by any municipality. So if there was a use across the street in Lower Marion, we'd still be able to regulate that use here in our borough. Obviously, we couldn't regulate them, but we can regulate what's, what's in the borough. So that is what's being proposed. If, this would be the time, if there are changes, there are desires to be made to this ordinance, if not, it would be advertised and sent to the planning commissions for formal review, formal review and formal feedback on those ordinances. Then we'd come back before council for a hearing on the ordinance.
Okay, so I just have a couple. Oh, go ahead, Fred.
Well, I was just gonna add that we, we had sent the, this to planning commission to suggest distances. So the distances that are in there are the distances that were recommended by planning commission. That's where those numbers came from. All right, go ahead, IRA.
So if a business changes owners but otherwise stays the same, is that considered a new business or?
It would be, it would be the, the use itself. So if it changes owner, it would, it would not, it would be grandfathered in as long as it's the same use. So you don't have to worry about changing.
But if they change the use at the same time, then that would.
You would lose, you would lose the use.
Yeah, and then, the, the other part I wasn't 100% clear on is, to the zoning hearing board have some leeway in, you know, like making exceptions to this?
They could always seek a variance. They'd have to seek a variance for that use and then they would report the zoning hearing board. But they'd have to look to see if there's a hardship that they should permit that there, if there is some unique aspect to that property, but that would be deferred to the zoning hearing board to make that determination.
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Jean.
I just wanna make a comment that I appreciate all of the extensive discussion that has happened around this. I think it's a delicate balance of trying to promote the kind of diversity of retail, the design, retail mix that we want in that downtown district to promote more foot traffic and the, make a thriving business community without, without causing some vacancies. So I think through the discussion and also limiting this to Haverford Avenue and Norbert Avenue, I think that's a good call in terms of striking that, that correct balance.
All right, thanks, Jean. Anybody else on council? Not seeing any hands.
Can I have a last sound bill?
Before we make, take a motion to advertise, you should take public comment prior to the motion to advertise. Usually you should allow action for a motion.
Before, before any motion to advertise, John?
Before, before action on council, you should provide the opportunity to follow comment on action.
But that was a general public comment section, wasn't it? What? I'm sorry.
If you wanted to consider that, yes. If the council wanted to entertain, if council wanted to entertain at the time of the motion, council put.
It's council president's discussion.
I'll just say, we, we haven't done it this way before. I apologize. And we have a, a big agenda today, so I'd rather stick with our, you know, the way we've done it in the past and take public comment during the public comment period at the beginning. All right, any, any other comments from council? All right, we are voting to advertise a zoning ordinance amendment to provide for dispersion of certain uses in the 5A and 5B districts. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, seems unanimous. All right, 9E, another zoning amendment.
Okay, I move council advertise zoning ordinance amendment related to comprehensive zoning changes.
I'll second.
All right. Yeah, I guess, John, you wanna summarize here?
Sure. The Norbert Planning Commission and the consultant from the Montgomery County Planning Commission, Chloe Moore, have been working for not a year, around that amount of time, if not more, related to a, a list of items that they felt should be developed in our code, particularly with Ms. Moore's drafting and assisting with the subdivision land development ordinance. Again, recognizing, once that came into place, where that ordinance, the SADO subdivision land development ordinance, where the SADO conflicts with the zoning. A number of items where there were conflicts were placed into that green building ordinance that council approved earlier today, if they were relevant and pertinent to the issues that were in that ordinance. However, there was an array of other definitions, an array of other changes that were recommended to the zoning code in order to be in line with the SADO. This ordinance incorporates those changes in order to make our SADO or zoning comply. So there's a number of, again, definitions added or amended and different uses of those definitions throughout the code. You know, for example, you'll see something that will now refer to a corner lot where it might have referred to a corner before a curb, before now refers to a curved line. So the first part of this ordinance makes a lot of those text changes to be in line with the SADO. The second significant part of this ordinance actually takes what was recommended by both the county and the Norbert Planning Commission's related to the green building and incorporates any of those substantive changes to be, to be made within this ordinance. A number of those items, I think, should specifically be discussed tonight because they are policy-related changes. And I'm happy to go through that when it's the time. But, so, so the second part of this ordinance is in response to the reviews done from the planning commissions of the ordinance that was just enacted. The third, sort of minor aspect of, of this ordinance, although potentially significant, is some recommendations that were made at one point by the Norbert Planning Commission related to how solar panels and solar water heating equipment is, is addressed in the borough in two, two aspects. One, they have to be parallel to the roof, which makes it an issue for flat roofs. This would allow it to be at an angle on flat roof as long as it's not visible from the street. And two, the question of how should these solar panels or solar water heating equipment be addressed on contributing resources in our historic districts? You know, should they, you know, how, since you are changing how that place appears from what would be the right way or the public way that you can see it, how it should be addressed? I believe the recommendation was, and I know the planning commission would like to get the input from the HARP, but to require sufficient appropriateness if you're removing a portion of the building's or the porch's roof to put in these solar panels. So that's actually, again, changing the, the roof. But then, having an advisory review, which again, is not obtaining sufficient appropriateness, but it's that meeting to get advice and feedback, if you're mounting solar panels or any tech equipment on the building or on the porch where it can be visible. So again, this has nothing to do if it's, you know, on the third lot layer and you can't see it, fine, but if you can see it from the public way, this is one that would apply. That it's proposed to replace that provision related to solar panels related to the advisory reviews, is proposed to replace that subsection eight, which was previously installing or altering ram slits or other accessory features, which as you recall, council decided they did not want to move forward with that when the HARP was, was adopted. So this would formally take that out from, from the ordinance and replace it with this provision. And I'd recommend echo to the HARP for their feedback on those two solar panel related issues as well. That, President Bush, would you like me to walk through some of the issues that I believe might be of more discussion points?
Well, let me, let me just say that first, I believe that we have incorporated all of the suggestions from planning commission, except for the ones that we are about to discuss now. Is that right? That the, the recommendations from planning commission are incorporated in this?
Correct.
Okay. And, yeah, I guess we can walk through the points one by one and then if council members have any other issues that they want to raise with that, we can, we can go after we go through the, the main points as far as you and I have seen them. So go ahead, John, if you want to start with your.
So the, the first point of discussion was a change to the green building ordinance, which was mentioned before, related to the 550 square feet or smaller apartments in both the four stories in the 5B district and in the, in the 5A, related to this mixed-use buildings. So it's in two, two items. And the language currently in the code that was just approved doesn't have a minimum requirement, meaning technically you'd have to do 10% for five units and then round out. There was some recommendations to sort of put a, a, a minimum amount of units that you would have before that kicks in, meaning this would be addressed to more towards size pool projects that then require those 550 square feet or smaller. I think there might have been some discussions of five units or six units. I think the planning commission, Norbert Planning Commission, recommends six or more units. So that's what was proposed here. And so that is a proposed change. So that, the, the 550 square feet buildings, which again, would have to be within a 36-foot tall building, you'd have to have at least six more units within that building, if that's the number you want to do in order for that to apply.
And since there was a, a question about these 550 square foot, I think the intention of putting this in there in the first place was to create a. I think the intention of putting this in there in the first place was to create a sort of an incentive for affordability is to say that, you know, we want to encourage some smaller units because, you know, we don't want to be a borough only for millionaires. And this is also why we've been looking into ADUs and looking into various other approaches that will, you know, we don't want to see McMansions everywhere. We don't want to see $3,000 a month apartments everywhere. We want to have, you know, some variety in the borough. And we want to, you know, make it a welcoming place for people of, you know, all income levels. And this is a small step that was recommended to us by the planning commission, I believe, in that regard. So that's why this provision is in here.
That's a question clarification because I'm still not clear. So the 10%, we're talking about, that was in the green building ordinance that we already talked about. Can you just refresh us on what that incentive was?
Sure.
And put this in context?
It says there is a requirement, again, this is if you're trying to get the, well, it's not the green building, but it's the 36 feet. So if you're trying to get the additional 36 feet in the 5A or use the apartment in the 5B, there's a requirement that you include 10% of the residential units to be 550 square feet or smaller. And the applicants shall round up to the nearest whole unit.
And so now we're going to impose an additional requirement that says that's only going to apply if you have a kind of project that we have where 10% will be at least like at least six units. I, okay.
So essentially, I think it's.
What's the reason? Like, maybe since Todd is here, can you maybe explain the planning commission's thinking of that? Because this is new to me.
And this came initially from the county planning commission. But then I think the Norberg planning commission followed up on it. Practically, I don't see it, I mean, I'm not sure how you're going to get the 36 feet and have less than six units. But the practical aspect, I think, would be is if you had five units, then you would then have to have one of those units, since you're rounding up, the whole number be that 550 square feet, so you only have four, or we're missing one.
If we didn't make this.
If you didn't make this change. So this is essentially saying, if you had five units, you don't have to do this or less. But are you really going to have five units and four stories or 36 feet anyways? I don't know if that's going to.
Sorry, so if it's a mixed-use building, it's only two stories of the ground block, Marshall. These would be two units, four units, yeah.
So then that would not have to.
They would not what?
They would not have to, this would not apply to that because they don't have the X amount of units for this.
So then it would be able to, the green.
No, it is, it wouldn't be a requirement for them to, they wouldn't be required to do the 550 smaller apartment because they don't have six units, whatever it is.
Oh, okay. Thank you for explaining that. I truly didn't understand that at all.
The bigger, the more you build, then you have to put in the smaller units.
All right. Does anybody in council object to the suggestion that we base this in at six units or more?
I don't, but I just want to make sure I've been, Todd's here, so I feel like could be asking this question. I'm hearing five or six, like there was some, is six what the planning commission is recommending to us? Okay. Thank you. I mean, I'm always happy to hear what Montgomery County Planning Commission recommends too, but I like to hear what the Norberg Planning Commission recommends. Thank you.
All right. So I'm hearing that we're okay with six. Let's move to the next topic.
The next topic, the ordinance, I believe, is under section Q. And this is related to the accessory dwelling units and the green building bonus criteria. And I believe there are two issues within this. One, should renewable resources be required for the primary buildings or just the ADU? So the way it was drafted, it was in a, there's green building bonus standards, one that applied to the entire property, so the primary building and then the accessory building. But there are some that just apply to just the accessory building. Originally, it was provided that you have to, that you'd have to show that was, if you were able to use renewable energy on the property, you would have to do so. And that would apply for both the primary building, the existing principal building, and the accessory dwelling. And I believe the thought was, was too much of a burden to retrofit an existing principal building with that, so we're okay with just having the ADU if it's, again, reasonably viable for them to do so, have to incorporate, you know, solar, wind, you know, electric, but not retrofit the primary principal building on the property. So that's the first sort of issue to address there, and that was the recommendation of the planning commission.
Which was the recommendation?
To have it only apply to the ADU and not the primary building. I think both planning commissions felt that way.
And I believe the council's already discussed this, and we kind of agreed with that, right? Does anybody object to having this apply only to the ADU and not to the existing primary building? Okay. Let's move on to your other.
And then the second issue with that is to what extent do you need to try to make that building use renewable energy? There was a recommendation that perhaps not allow the ADU to actually put in, for example, the solar panels, but to just have it sort of solar-ready. So to put in sort of the infrastructure to allow these renewable resources, but not actually have the property use renewable resources. So that's the discussion point as to whether or not the language would say, you know, that the property has to be constructed in a way that would provide for the future application of renewable resources on the property, or whether or not if they are able and viable to use them, they should be using them as they're putting in the ADU.
Can I ask what that means in terms of having it ready? Design-wise, is that, does that look different?
But it would be that if you're putting in electricity or, I'm not sure how that would work, but if you needed to put in the infrastructure from the house to then connect the solar panel or to put in a thermal heating system source, instead of actually having them actually go through and putting in right then. This is on page six, section two. Oh, and this is the, this, oh, this is probably not in the pack.
Oh.
Just change the scan on the ADU. Yeah.
That's why I can't find them.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. So, so right now, what are we saying? What did we just adopt? I'm looking just like, I need to make sure I understand.
So right now, it says, heat, electricity, heating, cooling, and similar systems shall be provided from onsite renewable resources if such systems are reasonably viable, considering the characteristics of the site. So if you, if you can use solar panels, and they're not really expensive, and you've got sun in the area, you should be using solar panels. But do we want them to require them to do that? Or do we just want to say, we want to make it easy? So if you wanted to put, if someone else wanted to put solar panels on in the future, since you're building this ADU now, you need to just make it ready for them. And Mr. Bressi, correct me if I'm misrepresenting what the intent or what the question was here. To be honest, I don't know where this question came from.
That came from Montgomery County originally. Came from MCPC.
The planning commission was quite comfortable with the recommendation that if you can do renewables, you got to do them. If you can't do renewables, you got to hook into a renewable supplier. And once Norberg joins the community choice program, you have to use a renewable supplier. I don't think we saw any need to justify making a building solar-ready. Again, that did not come from us, that question. We were happy with what was in the court.
And I would be too, because I think saying make something solar-ready, well, you're making it solar-ready for whatever today is, but you're not installing it. What if when the time comes that the person wants to install solar panels on their ADU? They're totally different. Well, they paid to put in something that didn't get them anything. That's what I think too. Like, I don't even know what that would mean. So it just feels like we're trying to predict the future and we can't do that.
I see people saying we should keep the language as written.
Jean had a comment.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Jean.
We're not requiring that they put solar panels.
No.
No, it's if viable.
If viable.
Reasonably viable.
If they have sun, you know, they might have too much.
I thought it might not sound so changed. Reasonably viable. And again, that term reasonably viable, if the planning commission or council wanted to come up with a determination of, and I would recommend that you should for objective criteria related to what that means, but I'm in no position to do that for language at this time, but certainly better than not. And allow the conversation to start. Finally, and this was the issue that councilman Winston started to talk about, there was a discussion related to the green building bonus. And this would be essentially if you're doing a mixed-use building, 36 feet tall, and the mixed use means, again, it's vertical mixed uses, you have residents at the top, you have commercial uses at the bottom. But what if that commercial use, for example, was a restaurant, and they want to have a gas oven or stove top so they can do the cooking and the flipping on the gas? Should they be allowed to have a gas line for, I use the term "commercial activities" within the building, but not including general HVAC purposes? And if expressly approved by Borough Council at the conditional use hearing for the project? So it would be a situation where they can't, the commercial activity, the restaurant would still not be heating the place with gas. But if they have an item that are based upon the commercial activity in the building, like a restaurant, and they needed to install a gas line, would that be an exemption from not having any natural gas, propane, oil, or other fossil fuels? And again, this is limited to gas lines.
So. Yeah, I would be willing to accept that as an exemption. Although, you know, I just have to say, the induction ovens are increasingly available. I talked about this with Ira. And, you know, there are lots of health hazards with gas cooking in a commercial setting. And there's methane, you know, that is a health hazard for the employees. And there's the heat generated by the, in the kitchen. So induction oven cooking seems to be just as precise as gas cooking, but I think it's maybe more expensive at the moment. But, you know, it's a viable alternative. But I understand the moment, you know, that we're in. I'd be willing not to require all-electric cooking in a commercial setting because that may have economic ramifications, you know, for our dentin. So that's why I would be willing to make that one exception. But as it's written, we would be requiring electric heat, electric water heaters, electric clothes dryers, and this is the only exception, is for stoves in commercial settings.
I think there could be an argument that a laundromat comes in and they want to use gas, washer, and dryers, they could say, hey, that's a commercial activity. If you wanted to limit it, if you want to limit it to restaurants and stoves, you can limit it. I kind of kept it broader, but whatever exception you want to have, this is the time to do it. This is why we're having that type of conversation. And the other thing is I did put the language in, say, expressly approved by Borough Council at the conditional use hearing for the project. You may not want to have that in there. I provided that as a proposed language, so you're going to have to expressly give that ability. Now, at the conditional use hearing, the person's probably not going to know exactly what tenant, what business may go in there. So they may only leave that open, but I thought it would be good for reference purposes that council was at least allowed that, particularly when we're going to be entering into a covenant on the property, that that was something that was agreed upon. Even if they don't, if they're not sure, they at least may be asked for.
So we're talking about the point of getting approval to construct the building. They're saying, well, if they're commercial, and first of all, I want to run gas lines because, you know, many people use gas for commercial purposes. Subsequent to that, there really isn't an opportunity, right? For the borough or the council to say, oh, well, for that restaurant, yes, but not for this, you know, whatever.
Correct.
And so, you know, there really isn't a way to do that in the zoning code, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, when they come before you, they're not going to know the exact use, likely for why they need a gas line. But they probably may want to keep that option open, and maybe you want to put some conditions on it. I just didn't want to have it sort of slipped in at the end after the approvals are there. Or, I mean, particularly, there could be a change in tenant, and then they're going to retrofit that space for that gas line. You may be fine with that. And then, you know, if our zoning officer finds, oh, well, you're not using the gas line as you wanted to, we can force it. So you may not care about having it expressly approved by Borough Council at the conditional use hearing. You may just say, well, let staff and administration handle that.
So you think it's, we can use our zoning code to say you can only use gas for commercial cooking, but not for a gas dryer and a laundromat? Are you sure that we can do that through zoning?
I'm not saying that you should condition what the use would be. I'm just saying that they would need to come before you and say, I would like to have a commercial, I'm not sure what commercial activity you may have, but I'd like to have that option, having that gas line.
After the gas line's run in a commercial building, at that point in time, the borough isn't having control over what activities the gas line is used to do.
It would have to remain a commercial activity.
It's on the construction.
I just wonder if it's a bit cumbersome for every time a restaurant business has to come before council to get a variance.
They won't, they can't. It's not even.
I don't think that if it's a restaurant, they wouldn't have to change it.
Well, so I guess practically speaking, I mean, I agree with you. Like, I think it's hard to say, like, the developer to decide whether they're going to put a gas line in or not, not knowing what kind of tenant is going to come in.
If council doesn't want to put that in, I can scratch that last line. It would say not including general HVAC purposes. It'd be easier.
Conditions.
And at the same time, I think we want to encourage, I think restaurants are definitely part of the retail mix we would like in our downtown district, so I don't want, I don't want to ruin this.
Remember, this is just if someone is trying to get the green building bonus, right? This really isn't for any restaurant. This is if a developer is building something new and wants the green building bonus. So if we've got an existing restaurant space and a different owner comes in to use that as a restaurant, they're not going to have to come before us for that. If they've got a gas line, they've still got a gas line. So this is really limited. I'm not arguing that we should keep in the, the Borough Council looks at a conditional use hearing. I just want to make it clear that it's, this is a fairly limited set of situations in which this would even be looked at by somebody who's saying.
Yeah, nobody ever comes to me. There's no mechanism to have people come before council for conditional use when they're signing a lease.
Right. Exactly.
So it's only at the point when a building.
Right, branded or something. Right. I just wanted to make it clear in case anybody's watching and thinking, whoa, what are you guys doing to our restaurants? That's not what this is in.
So it's, I can't really tell where council is on this. Is there a general consensus to leave this in as the language in as it currently is? Does anybody object to leaving the language in as it currently is?
I think I may have given the conversation though too. So I think the first issue should really be, is council okay with having the gas lines for whether or not you want to let it make a specific use or for general approved commercial activities? It's probably approved commercial activities within the building. I'm probably going to change it. I'm probably going to change it to approved authorized. I mean, I think the intent was, you have to compile it for something, not that you have to approve the actual use. So I may just say needed for commercial activities within the building.
Yeah.
I think council seems to approve of that, so.
Trying to think of other uses. I said a kiln, you said a dry cleaner, a gas line, I don't know, but.
There could be a commercial, unforeseen commercial use that we're not thinking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it is just gas lines, it's not propane, oil, or.
Right, right, right. I'm fine with this, if you're looking for people, so I can come up with one.
That's fine, as long as, yeah, me too.
And do you care if it's reserved, the right to do that before you had a conditional use, or do you just want to say no?
I don't see the need for us to create another layer of review.
So it looks like this is going to say natural gas lines may be installed on a limited basis when needed for commercial activities within the building, but not including general HVAC purposes. President Bush, is that, resolve that issue?
Can't hear you.
All right, can you hear me now? Okay. So I think that's it for the issues that John had raised. You got one more?
And I did want to say, one of the other changes council and the green building ordinance had in the zoning, the mixed use building requirement of 36 feet and three stories in the 5A, to have design requirements related to the third story that they be stepped back six feet and have a functional outdoor space. This ordinance would also propose to move that out of the zoning and put that into the SAV as well, but the purpose of that is to have more flexibility for those design requirements for both the planning commission and for council to protect waiver and to review that through land development instead of having it through zoning. And that was a recommendation that was made by the planning commissions. The final issue is, I didn't want to presume that council was in agreement with the changes to the historic district code, particularly when, I believe this probably should go to the HARB for their feedback as well. This was something that was from a couple of months ago from the planning commission, again, related to the solar panels. Is this something that council would like to have included or something that would go to the HARB? It's a balance, obviously, between environmental concerns and historic preservation and where that line is drawn.
I'm fine with the HARB having advisory review, but I do not support requiring people to get a certificate of appropriateness to go through that process to put solar panels on. I'm just saying, I mean, the balance would be, it's already hard enough. I mean, installing it, it's expensive, it's like, you know, I don't want to put another part along the way.
So this would only require the strict appropriateness if they're removing all or a portion of the building or portion of roof in order to put those in? And I think technically you may have to do that anyways if you're changing the slope of the roof. However, if you're just putting the panels on to which would be required on angle roof to be parallel to that angle, quite frankly, if it was on a flat roof, you wouldn't see it, and if you didn't see it, then actually wouldn't come before the HARB anyways.
There are flat roofs in that.
And I'm not sure if there's any in HARB, but I have seen municipalities how people sometimes will put an HVAC unit right on top of the porch. And the idea is, is that the load that you want in the store?
That's what I'm going down.
And again, that would only be through that advisory review.
Yeah, I just, removing a portion of the roofing or building element is a pretty low bar and maybe necessary for a lot of installations. I just, I don't want, people have to have a certificate of appropriateness for that. I just feel.
Yeah, I wonder if there's like a, you know, removing a majority would require a certificate of appropriateness. I mean, how, you know, if you're doing something that is taking a big chunk away, I'm just, you know, is that, I don't know. Do we know what our planning commission recommended?
This was language that was taken from the planning commission's recommendations. However, the planning commission was clear that they would like to have HARB's thoughts on this.
Oh, they like the HARB's thoughts.
Did I say that correctly? It was a brush there.
Just the, did we lose Fred?
Uh-oh. Michael.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, our professional memory.
Yeah, well, I just said, it seems unlikely, it's hard for me to picture a situation where someone with, you know, a beautiful Victorian in HARB is going to alter, dramatically alter.
Yeah.
It doesn't say beautiful Victorian, but that's the problem. It says any, anything, there are a lot of things to qualify as contributing resources. In order to get us all over on, you can easily see somebody needing to remove a building element. And I just think, you know, it's a little much for that. I guess my question was, right now, don't, I mean, if you're in the first lot layer and it's visible from the street and you're removing a building element, don't we need a certificate of appropriateness for that already? Or we have an exemption?
I think it says if you're changing the slope or angle or.
The certain shape of the roof.
So if you were taking it off just to replace it with something that looked exactly the same, you wouldn't need a certificate of appropriateness?
You.
You wouldn't now, if you're trying to.
That's what I'm saying, is that what, right now?
The language that was proposed said removing all or portion of the building or portions of roofing or other elements. So technically, if you removed the element based the way it's drafted, put it back in the way it is, different elements, see it.
Well, yeah, because if you put it back in the same, I'm like.
Well, yeah, all I'm saying is.
Sorry, folks, I'm having technical issues here. We have an electrical storm, so I just lost power briefly. So I'd just like to ask Vice President Pananopoulos to take over managing the rest of the meeting in case this happens again. Apologize.
So it could be very easy just to move forward with the advisory review for mounting solar panels, solar water, heating equipment, heating equipment, not hearing. And that obviously would cover, you know, the greater aspect that you're discussing at this time as well. So that's something that council wanted to move forward with now. You could, I also believe that there was a recommendation that we sort of tried, tried out to see how it worked. But obviously, I think most of those are. So you can move forward with not requiring a strict appropriateness language, but just with the, or either. Or either.
Well, is it that we have an exemption in historic district deck now for changes that are related to installing solar? Todd, I don't know that, I can't remember. I'm trying to figure out why this is, is this even a change?
I don't believe it is addressed.
Okay. So if we took out this item Y that requires a certificate of appropriateness, could we then ask the HARB what they thought about that later on? If they said, they think that's important, could we include that in a later zoning, I mean, well, someday they'll read otherwise, because zoning codes never stay the same.
It does, there are guidelines for alterations that the HARB is supposed to take, that they are supposed to develop, and then take into account affordability and environmentally, environmental sustainability, so that there is that preference.
So if removing a building element would trigger a review that requires a certificate of appropriateness, if, anyway, it doesn't really matter. I mean, this isn't really adding, this is really adding anything? I'm not sure that we need to, it's not a second thing.
So. I, this is the language that was provided, that. The, the, he needs to give the proper for changing the shape, slope, or configuration of the building's roof or roof line by the removal of dormers or the filling in of sleeping porches.
Okay, so that's, all right, thank you. That's not lost. So this does expand.
So this would be correct. And it doesn't have to necessarily result in any change in shape, slope, or configuration if there is a replacement of the actual roofing material.
So could we agree to take out the certificate of appropriateness for now and ask the HARB for their opinion on that? And it could, you know, down the road be included?
I have some input.
Yeah.
Is it appropriate? Absolutely.
We'll give you a certificate of appropriateness.
I had a comment on, not the topic of the year, but I have a comment on this topic. Trying to replay the history of this, which goes back to last summer. And the reasons of, council member Pananopoulos, your question is the exactly correct one we asked, like, so why would need this? And the reason this came about is because we were exploring the creation of a mechanism to allow people to have exceptions from the zoning code in order to not, I mean, right now, the rules about solar panels are very strict. They have two panels in the roof, they're getting within eight inches away, which restricts the efficiency of solar panels, right? We did a ton of research on this. Solar panels don't lose that much efficiency, but we thought it would be good to build a mechanism for that ability. The first idea we had was to create a special exception, but then didn't see enough way of control of the outcome. So really, what we proposed, it was not our intention, actually believing in my letter, realizing now we left it out, and then we wanted to say, like, if you wanted an exception from that parallel to the roof eight-inch rule, then you would have to go to the HARB. You wouldn't have to go to the HARB in every case, but if you wanted more flexibility from the zoning code gives you, then you could have that flexibility. That was, that was the context of the conversation. And realizing now, we got around to writing it up and sending it to you, we left that context out. So the idea, council member, was to actually give people an option to have more flexibility than the zoning code gave them, because we could not articulate any objective standards for that. We said, well, let's just say if you want to do something that the zoning code doesn't allow, you could get a approval by the HARB. We never really aired that out to the listener, as to whether, how that became constructed. But really, what we wanted to do is give people more ability to touch solar panels.
I think you have the HARB would have the power to use a certificate of appropriateness to do something that was, that the zoning code disallows, that would be a variance.
Well, that's my, that's what I just said, we did explore that with the listener and find out how that could work.
I understand that.
It's to grasp the context of why this is here.
Mr. President, was the intent, because this is another item, was there an intent to allow any angle mounting on non-flat roofs or only angled on flat roofs? Because the way that this was proposed was that for flat roofs, it has to be mounted either parallel, but not more than six foot above, or at an angle, provided it's not visible from the street.
Right, I think that's a compelling factor, correct, it's not visible.
But it would remain that if you had a angled roof or a pitched roof, you would have to follow the pitch of that roof and not have it at a different pitch.
Right.
Then that's the, what.
That's what I would say now.
Would recommend it. But the intent was, if you were going to have a different pitch, you wanted to make sure that was okay with the HARB.
Yes, that's right. It's not just a pitch, like, to the roof like that, it could also be turned aside, you know, the people to do that. So, you know, we're really trying to nail it's people's desire to have this infrastructure versus the intent in historic district, and so.
Really, the way of doing that would be to just say you're allowed to have an angled roof, but then also allow the HARB to have control over angled solar, or angled solar panel, but then the HARB to have it, so that way the zoning code does allow it, but they wouldn't be able to do it unless they got a specific.
I have a suggestion, I think just a little, period. Yeah, because I think, honestly, those restrictions on angles of solar panels were passed long before they passed the HARB, so it wasn't really, it was more just sort of, I feel like it's a, I don't know. I guess my opinion is it's a sort of fastidiousness, aesthetics that I don't really think is appropriate in a zoning code. I think that there are some reasonable, probably some reasonable odds, but like Todd said, we have fairly restrictive standards for how you can install panels, and I think we should probably just look at loosening those up, maybe looking at whatever, you know, if there's other jurisdictions whose codes we can vote in, rather than trying to do it through the HARB.
So their desire to not have either thing at this time?
I'm fine with advisory review, because I think, I mean, we should be mindful, I mean, we should ask the HARB, because then they say, you know, you've got way too many things coming to us for our advisory review, and we're going to be selective about where we can add value. I would like to hear the HARB's opinion on that. I'm always happy, because I think if the HARB has the time, they have to do it, they can always add value and give people helpful understanding of how to make the project better, but they may not, you know, may need a sense of balance.
Would you like, should we remove both from the ordinance and then have the conversation with the HARB prior to moving forward to advertising these changes?
What do you think, I'm comfortable with that, but I don't have a few of the others.
True, so we'll keep in the language related to allowing it to be angled on a flat roof, because it is a zoning code change, but we'll remove, for the purposes of this ordinance, those two provisions, but we'll follow up with the HARB related to their thoughts on that.
Okay.
And those were the items for discussion.
All right, we're still going to keep the advisory review for, we're going to change the, on the ramps, right?
What did you do?
Well, we want to get rid of that section. Right, we're going to.
Do you want to just amend, just get rid of?
Right, we're going to get rid of the ramps, yes, yes.
Just get rid of the ramps, sorry.
Yes. We're striking that. Can we just?
Technically, we're not enforcing it.
Right, right, so can we get it out of the code so that nobody?
Sure, we're just going to strike it.
And I guess it becomes, because.
Yes.
There's items that follow it, so it just becomes reserved for future use.
Yes, so we will strike that, installing or altering ramp slips or other accessibility features, so they will not have to go through advisory review or our code, even though practically that's not what the HARB is doing now anyways, but we're not going to address anything related to solar panels in the historic district chapter one way or another at this point in time until we get back from the HARB as to what their thoughts are.
Is it private?
Is that correct?
I think so.
And I don't know if council has any other issues they want to discuss with this, against just for a motion to advertise if that motion is made. I'm not sure if it was made.
Fred, did we have a motion?
Yes, there was a motion and it was seconded before we started all this discussion.
Yeah, so those are just the issues that John had flagged, but if there's anything else, I mean, there were a lot of, a lot of issues here. If there's anything else anybody wants to bring up, now would be a good time.
Well, is it a position after what we just discussed to be advertised, or do we have to make, do more research or changes?
We were planning to advertise tonight, if everybody's comfortable with that, but it's available to advertise.
Council's going to advertise, wants to advertise this, I would advertise it with the change related to natural gas lines may be installed on a limited basis when used for commercial activities within the building, but not including general HVAC purposes. And then I would also advertise it by removing what is Y and Z of the ordinance related to historic district items, but I would keep in the, just replacing the, taking out, installing or altering the ramps and stuff.
And I think Todd has something to contribute. Thank you. I know Fred, you can't see him. Go, please.
Thank you. Mr. Walco, you said you thought that this captured all of the comments that the planning commission made. It's been hard to look at all this, but there's one thing I wanted to ask you about, because I'm not sure if it's captured. In the, the ordinance which you just voted on, which council just voted on tonight, in the green building provision, there, in that section, there's a provision that a restrictive covenant must be, do you have any experience?
Yes, and that wasn't the intent, but. Yes, and that wasn't the intent, but I think that was drafting issues. For both the ADU and the green building, there was language that said that the restrictive covenant will be drafted, that will restrict, and it said redevelopment of the property or the removal of the conditions required that would stay in place to restrict that. Certainly, the intent wasn't to allow any redevelopment, it would just be restricting redevelopment that would then remove the requirements, you know, the electric lines and replacement of gas. So I think the language was proposed to change, to simply say that a restrictive covenant will be filed that will restrict the removal of the conditions required for the green building bonus established here and for the property unless authorized by Borough Council, or if the green building bonus is not required for that redevelopment. So you're certainly able to redevelop it, something that you don't need the bonus for, and/or the new uses proposed. So, and that's for both the ADUs and for, so if you wanted to take your ADU that was a residence and move it back into a shed, you could do that, and that shed wouldn't have to maintain the green building standards.
Is that in the ordinance that council just voted on, or in this?
That's what's being proposed here.
In this revision?
Correct.
Okay.
But again, I don't think that's what the intent would be anyways, that's a very fair reading, but the intent was never to restrict all future redevelopment, it was just to restrict someone putting it over on council and agreeing to something and then coming in and changing the use, taking the advantage of the height and then getting rid of the height later. But I think that fear is covered by simply saying removal of the conditions required.
So if we both advertise this tonight, what, does this still need to go then to?
This would go to the planning commissions as well, this would, this would, at its earliest, be allowed to come before council in September, because there's a 30-day requirement, and we don't have 30 days between this meeting and the next business meeting, so the next opportunity will be the September business meeting, as would be the spurking uses of this.
All right, I mean, I seem to have fairly reliable internet at this time in power, so I'll, I'll say it does seem like everybody's, I don't see any more questions, I don't see any more discussion here. All right, so, someone's saying something, sorry. Okay, so I think we're ready to call the vote here, so we are voting to advertise this zoning ordinance amendment related to comprehensive zoning changes. All those in favor of advertising the ordinance? Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Master Park Plan.
I need to approve the revised master park plan study committee members.
All right, so there had been a question about the purpose of the master park planning, so who would like to give us a summary here?
We can still talk.
We can still talk.
Yeah, we should, we should still summarize.
Do you want me to do that?
Sure, go ahead, Jean, thank you.
So in May, the borough submitted the list for the master park plan study committee to DCNR, and DCNR provided feedback that we needed more diversified representation on the committee that represented more members from the public community, including teachers, the business community, who are not currently serving on the reserve commissions. So additional residents have come forward since then to express interest in participating in the study committee, and we had 14 total people come forward, and at the June 13 Parks and Recreation Board meeting, they voted to amend the study committee structure to nine members, and that would include three members of Parks and Recreation, one member of Planning Commission, one member of Shetree Commission, one member of Borough Council, and one public school teacher, and one private school teacher, and one member of the business community. And what we need to approve tonight is the final list for that study committee, and I can go through the, should I go through the names?
Well, let me just go back briefly here, so this is, this is, we received a grant from the Pennsylvania DCNR to look at our parks and determine their needs, and particularly long-term needs. This is a step that will let us, in the future, get grant funding more easily, we'll say, well, we have this park plan, it says we really need more picnic tables, we really need, you know, accessible structures, and, you know, this envisioning process, this park plan will allow us to, you know, proceed with our goals to improve our parks in the future. So we have funding for this, this plan, we need a, you know, a group to manage this on the borough's end, so we are appointing a group tonight, and there are certain conditions the DCNR has given us that Jean has just explained. All right, so Jean, if you want to take over and go over the candidates?
So for the business community, Gary Katsmer has come forward, he is, he owns a benefits consulting firm, for preschool teacher, Lisa Paninos from Narwhth Presbyterian, Benjamin Demeo, who is a lower Marion High School art teacher, Sally Anderson from the Shetree Commission, Michael Galdini from the Planning Commission, and then from Parks and Recreation, we have Dennis Robin, Dennis Callen, and Rebecca Moore, and Chris McLeod has also expressed interest, so we need to narrow that down to three, and then myself, Jean Borak, representing Borough Council.
Did you mention Heidi, beside you?
So, when Parks and Recreation met at the June 13 meeting, they wanted to reduce it down to nine members, and to, to be able to include members from the business community and the teachers, they needed to reduce the number of planning commissioners. So Heidi has volunteered to step back.
Okay, that's what we need to do.
All right, so Jean, would you like to make a recommendation based on your knowledge of the Parks and Recreation for the three members from there?
Based on time availability, and for Parks and Recreation, I think Dennis Robin has attended almost every single meeting, and, and he's been, I think they're both great, Chris McLeod and Dennis are both great, but he, Dennis has attended every single meeting, and Chris McLeod, it seems he has less time availability, so my recommendation would be to, for Dennis Robin.
As well as Dennis Callen and, who's our third planning commission, or from, so do you just want to go down the list once again of the, if you, to give a list of the people you'd recommend?
From Parks and Recreation?
Well, why don't you just read down the list of nine?
So it's Gary Katsmer, Lisa Paninos, Benjamin Demeo, Sally Anderson, Michael Galdini, Dennis Robin, Dennis Callen, Rebecca Moore, and Jean Borak.
All right, thanks, Jean. Anyone else on council have questions or concerns about this list? All right, thank you for everyone who stepped forward here, we really appreciate the people who reached out and showed interest in this, it's, you know, it's an important part of our community, and we thank you for, for stepping forward. We have a motion on the floor, so let's vote on that list of nine members for the Master Parks Plan Committee as laid out by Councilmember Burak. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, thanks to our new Master Park Planning Commission. Nine G is some repair projects.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't use this one.
Okay, so, okay, does it matter?
I mean, I could do it.
Right. Do you want me to do it?
Oh, okay. I move council advertise bid acceptance for Woodside Avenue Drainage Improvement Project and Havford Avenue Emergency Sanitary Sewer Repair Project.
Second. I'd just like to take a quick note that it isn't actually an emergency repair, that was by error in the agenda, really what's included here for the Havford Avenue Sanitary Sewer Repair is, cammering work had been completed in that facility, and they discovered that there is a main that basically has been inundated by tree roots, and so you need to replace that. It's not an emergency, but it's a good idea to address it while working the vicinity of the area, and so that was added to the project, so just a clarification.
Well, I think that's a sign that our project of cammering all of our sanitary sewers is paying off, if we're finding significant blockages before they, you know, cause a mess in the streets, so that's good to hear. Are there any questions from council? All right, so we're going to be advertising these, putting these out to bid, and then we'll be approving offers as they, later on when they come in, that's the status here?
Yeah, upon bid acceptance, it will, will come back, well, once we've received all the bids, we'll come back and put the council to accept the bids.
To award.
Award, award the bids to the county, yes.
All righty. So let us vote to advertise bids for the Woodside Avenue Drainage Improvement and the Havford Avenue Sanitary Sewer Repair. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you. Information items, the monthly reports have been filed and are in the packets. Friends of Narwhth Green Initiatives update. Mr. Walker, once again.
So.
So, did I skip something?
No, no.
I have to say, my wife has arrived and she has my ears, and I'm having trouble with my hearing aid. So we're at this item now?
Yes.
So just by way of background, I was directed by council some time ago to create the nonprofit entity, the Friends of Narwhth Green Initiatives, or FONGI, as has been called. We did incorporate that entity, it is in existence as a Pennsylvania nonprofit entity, so that's the first step. Due to personnel changes, I was named as the incorporator, or the creator of that entity, so it's mine. I can do with it what I want, but as the Solicitor of Narwhth Borough, I'm going to do what you want me to do. So it comes to the time now where I am drafting the bylaws, and I have a couple quick last-minute things I need to talk about, but as the incorporator, I am able to approve the bylaws, I am able to then hand off this entity to an actual board of directors who's going to actually use the entity, what this entity is supposed to be used for, which is to assist, support, facilitate, and benefit any project, action, property, or program of Narwhth Borough that relates to the preserving, stewarding, maintaining, or vitalizing green open spaces throughout Narwhth Borough, promoting and supporting green energy households, supporting the acquisition, development, and maintenance of new green open spaces within Narwhth Borough, fostering healthy public spaces and public works projects within Narwhth Borough, engaging diverse communities, promoting community and economic development, and performing related municipal purposes that advance or support open space and green energy initiatives within Narwhth Borough. So that is the purpose of this entity. The bylaws will eventually say that council will appoint three, unless you tell me otherwise, because I need to get, let's take a step back, this is an informational session, because there is no formal action that council needs to take tonight, because I have all the power, but I want to make it, I want to make it as you want before I hand it over, and then when it's handed over and those bylaws are done, council will have the ability to make what I've been told will be three out of five appointments to award. And I've been told that there are five members that are interested in serving on this board, and I want to obtain the feedback from council as to whether I should move forward with passing my own resolution to name these people as the initial board. And the names and the offices and the terms that I've been told are as follows. Bob Wiseboard as the chair for the five-year term, Rosemary McDonald as the secretary for the four-year term, Rich Myers as treasurer for a three-year term, Peter Grove as a member for a two-year term, and Lee Davis as a member for a one-year term. So if council is okay with those names and those offices and those terms, I will hand it over to them and reach out to Mr. Wiseboard in order to create meetings for them. What I've been told is that, again, they want a five-year term to start. I'm not sure how long you would like terms to go after that point in time, and which terms should, maybe you want to keep it that way, just have one term expire each year, that's probably the easiest to do. I also did not know which of those three wants to be considered the ones appointed by council, because I would reflect that in the bylaws. There is a way of saying that the three should be the three with the least amount of terms, so you would have more appointments coming up sooner, because those would be the positions on the board that you would appoint, or you can say, let's do the three with the longest term, so we don't have to worry about this for a couple of years. That's just more of a strategy point, I see, by President Penanopoulos. You could do five, three, one, which would be, and obviously, there could be reappointments, there won't be caps on the terms. The, I was also expecting to give them power to sort of choose after that point in time who the next chair, secretary, treasurer, if they wanted to have a vice chair, would be, so we'd make the initial appointments to those offices, but then after that point in time, leave it upon themselves. That's usually what you do with your committees and commissions. I believe there was a desire to have, we would say, the borough manager or the managers designate the sort of an ex officio member of the board, that would be in the bylaws, or an ongoing member, or would be involved, just to sort of have staff involvement as necessary. But besides that, I would anticipate the bylaws being But besides that, I would anticipate the, the, the bylaws being pretty typical for nonprofits, saying that they have to meet once a year, um, if they wanted to expand the board, or if they wanted to take certain significant actions. It usually would, the bylaws will say will require Borough Council approval. So although this won't be, this will not be, you know, a commission or a subsection of, of Borough Council, it will be its own entity. Uh, however, based upon their bylaws, they are providing council with a certain amount of control. And that does fit with the fact that this, this organization's intent is to help Narwhal Borough. So are those names, offices, and terms I've, I've listed satisfactory for the bylaws? And then we'll have the five-year, three-year, and one-year term be who council appoints. And then I will be in contact with Mr. Wiseboard as the chair, um, to, to advise him and to circulate sort of resolutions to get everything in place and to get the organization off, off the ground. Uh, I will circulate the bylaws for, for council's review. Uh, however, uh, I think those are the major, major points. And certainly the bylaws will be amended in the future, um, based upon feedback from board if there's something that wasn't working. So, so that's sort of the update. This is an exciting time because with, with your permission, I will then hand this over moving forward. Now, one thing that is important to keep in mind is that this entity is going to be created, there will be four, there will be a bylaws. I will, I will advertise the nonprofit, um, creation of this nonprofit entity. However, even though it's set up as a nonprofit, it is still not a 501(c)(3) organization. It still cannot provide tax deductions if you make donations for it at this time. However, the entity can start to do the work that we can then submit for, uh, that exemption status. And they're going to want to sort of see, you know, what your intent is and your members, but also, you know, what are you doing in furtherance of your nonprofit mission? So hopefully there will be some, some activities they can, they can do that we can provide for application. And then we can file that application. I, I have it that I will be assisting, uh, as their solicitor to, to kind of make that happen on their behalf. Um, and then hopefully, you know, they will obtain that, that nonprofit status. And that would be the next large step.
So when can, when can they start kicking in donations?
So they can always take donations. Well, well, first off, the, the treasurer will need to open up a bank account, uh, and, and to put the money. They can take donations, those donations just won't be taxed.
And they can't be retroactively taxed?
And it won't be retroactively taxed.
So it, but how long, realistically, how long might it take to get 501(c)(3) status?
It depends on the federal government, but once you apply, it'll take 90 days.
90 days?
But it might take, it might take time in order to get to the point where you have enough of an entity that's active to say, all right, let, let's move it forward.
Okay, but it's not like years before it becomes 501(c)(3). Okay, that's fine.
When do you plan to file? It takes 90 days, when will you?
Well, it, a lot of that depends on the organization itself. I mean, there, there needs to be activities and events or, or furtherance. So it's, it's almost like applying for college. Say, hey, look, we're a real nonprofit, look at all this good stuff we're doing. We need to take proof of that good stuff and send it to the federal government to say, no, look, we really are doing nonprofit type work.
How long do you anticipate before you can do that?
It depends on, on what FONGI wants to do. If, if FONGI wants to start meeting and, uh, you know, uh, fixing up Three Elmwood, we're trying to hold meetings or educate the public on green initiatives. And, and we can send proof of activities and events and proof of, uh, you know, printed material for their classes, something that shows that they're actually doing something within the mission. We can put those as exhibits with the application and, and send it in.
Is that really downside to applying again, objecting, just to apply again, right?
Yeah, that's what you would do, correct. You wasted your 90 days.
Well, let me ask a question a different way. When, what's as soon as we can schedule the first meeting of this group?
They can, they can meet whenever they want to meet. I, I mean, but it is, uh, they can meet whenever they want to meet and then we can sort of backfill, you know, what needs to be done. There, there is also the issue, as, as Kim and Larry just passed, uh, mentioned. Uh, one of the, one of the filings is reporting on, you know, the holdings and the nonprofit holdings. And, and they don't have to have significant money. Uh, you just have to report what you have. And we are going to have Borough Hall be the basis of operations. This would be the registered office, um, for purposes of, of, of the IRS and the entity and the bylaws, unless there's a desire to change that. It'd be great if the organization becomes successful and they can, you know, have their own building and location.
Sounds to me like the first step is that they actually have a meeting.
There's nothing that stops these five people from getting together and saying, what are we gonna do? And, and I don't need to be involved in that. It, it's good to keep meeting minutes and records. Because again, showing that it's an entity with these meeting minutes and records is something that we can provide again to IRS for, uh, for, for showing that this is a, a real entity. And I will, I will provide all of the, the bylaw documentation. I will provide, uh, the proof of, of the legal advertisement which still needs to be done. And the, the initial resolutions and the articles of corporation. So I can handle that aspect. I would just defer to the group to actually handle the work, uh, and the, and the outreach.
Okay.
Thank you.
Because the organization has an express purpose of serving the borough of Narwhal, we don't, I assume it's okay. Do we need to do anything to make sure that it's fine that borough resources are going to be used, for example, to advertise for them or to pay solicitors' bills to advise them? I mean, that's, that's fine, right? Because they do have that express purpose.
Correct, as long as they're serving our municipal purposes and our, our missions that we want to do as well, uh, those, those expenses could be just taken. Okay?
I have a question that's probably technical, but I'm going to ask it anyway because I were asked, how soon can they meet? Say, can we now if they want? So in the, um, resolution, I guess, hands things over to them. It, you say commencing as of January 1st, 2024 is when their termings start? But that doesn't mean that they can't start anything until then? Okay, I just want to make sure that wasn't like.
You have to think about it as how you want to set it up? And then what do you want to do moving forward?
Right.
And I did have a January 1st, just so it is in line with the appointments of council.
That's what I thought, but I, but I was like, I wanted to make sure because I don't want, you know, one of these five people to read that and go, oh, we can't do anything until January 1st. Yeah, I didn't think it meant that.
And obviously, one of the first steps is to, to open up the accounts for the treasurers and signing what you need to do in order to be able to take it, that, that's the.
All right, and once again, I want to thank everybody for stepping forward here and supporting the Borough's Green Initiatives. Uh, thank you, Mr. Grove, for attending the meeting and, uh, and putting your name out there, and thanks to everyone else.
He's not here, yeah, just in a session. Yeah, this was Cindy's idea.
Yeah.
And when I hear what you said earlier about there's got to be a lot of people who want to give money, I think that's true and that's the reason why this is being created. And this, that is something that this board should be doing, is getting the public to know, hey, look, you can donate money and here's what it's going to be used for, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, it should be very exciting.
All right. Any new business for council? Taking into advisement that it is getting quite late here. Any old business? Uh, committee reports? Let's begin with Public Health and Safety.
Well, we, we did not meet this month, so we're meeting next in August.
Okay.
We don't have nothing beyond what you heard last month.
All right, Finance and Administration, I believe, uh?
Our committees are meeting this month, so. Yeah, let's just wait until August then.
All right, so nobody's met, okay. Fair enough. Uh, let's move on to comments for the good of council.
Just a reminder about the meet and greet with, uh, with our new Borough Manager, the 27th, Thursday, 27th, 5 to, 5 to 7 p.m. at the gazebo in the park.
All right, thank you, Mayor Dorch. Seeing no more, we will have an executive session, uh, after this meeting to discuss, uh, the disposition of borough property at 201 Sabine, a legal matter regarding 198 Elmwood Avenue, uh, and a legal matter regarding EV chargers. Uh, I do not anticipate that we will reconvene. I don't think we have a need to reconvene, we will not reconvene after, uh, the executive session. I will take a motion to adjourn.
A move that we adjourn?
Is there a second? All right, uh, all those in favor of adjourning? Any opposed? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everyone. Everyone who came on, it's nice to see people coming and, and learning and finding out what's going on in the borough. I love it.